Besides in front of me, I can notarize it. I just left my stamp downstairs though.
Sometimes.
It's bowling night.
It's seven twenty-two P M. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session. Motion by Mr. Simmons. Second by Mr. Livingston. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Approval minutes, October twentieth, special emergency common council meeting. What's your pleasure? Motion by Mr. Livingston, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion for the minutes of the October twenty-third common council meeting. What's your pleasure? Motion by Ms. Miller. Second by Mr. Livingston. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And the last is the special common council meeting of November ninth. What's your pleasure? Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Livingston. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Executive session material. Out of executive session, first we have a settlement with employee three-five-eight. This is a disciplined settlement. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Livingston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'll entertain a motion to make an appointment effective eleven-twenty-one for Stan Buzik Junior, or Stan Buzik the third, excuse me, to the detective position in the Port Jervis Police Department. Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Ms. Miller. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried and congratulations, Stan. I'm sure his mother is watching from Arizona, one hundred percent. Okay, Lisa, you can call everybody, even your son. He probably doesn't even know yet.
Call your son.
Yeah, call your son. I'll entertain a motion to, for the request of Mr. John Fagion and his carryover vacation request. What's your pleasure? Motion by Mr. Livingston, second. Second by Ms. Miller. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The request for Mr. Durier for his carryover vacation payout. Motion by Mr. Siegel. Second by Mr. Livingston. We're paying, okay, so, so for Mr. Fagion, it's a three-day carryover to March thirty-first and payout of seven days. For Mr. Durier, it is just a straight payout of five days. And then the next is...
I'm sorry, who did that?
That was Siegel and Livingston. I'll do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And then for Mr. Addy's request of a payout of five days. Motion by Mr. Simmons, second by Mr. Livingston. Discussion.
And that's all budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have a request to transfer remaining sick time of an employee. The number will be added later of all twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three accrual, accrual time. What's your pleasure? Motion by Mr. Livingston. Second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you, and I think I got everything. No, that's later on. That's not part of the executive session. Okay. Regular business. Who's got Mr. Foster's ADA planning and zoning?
I do, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Zoning Board will meet on December fifth at seven P M. The Planning Board will meet on November twenty-first at seven P M. And the ADA will meet on December fourth at five-thirty. All the meetings will be held here in council chambers, and that's all I have to report on the Councilman Foster.
Thank you.
ADA is five-thirty?
Yes. Five-thirty on the floor. Ms. Miller, finance.
Thank you. We have bills to be paid from the General Fund, one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. From the Water Fund, fifteen thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. For the Sewer Fund, four thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and four cents. For Trust of Capital Fund, one million, twenty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-twelve dollars and twenty-eight cents. And for Trust and Agency, one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. For a total of one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
I'm gonna ask you to repeat that number, please.
You're kidding, right?
No, just the one million.
One million, yeah, one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you.
Some larger items to note from the General Water and Sewer Funds for the Village of Chester for a reimbursement cost for an officer, fifty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and forty-six cents. For Gola Montello Group, nineteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. For Orange and Rockland, PJ Solar, thirty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. For Orange County Landfill, twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Some larger from Capital. For A-Tech Concrete, three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-five dollars. For Callahan Industries, six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, six, I'm sorry, six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and forty-four cents. For Schmitz Wholesale, four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. And for Tyler Technologies, three thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
A motion by Ms. Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Livingston. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
I also have a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis to fill an open P T Human Resources Coordinator position. Whereas the City of Port Jervis in need of a part-time Human Resources Coordinator, and whereas Darla Shields has applied for said position and appears qualified to perform the duties required of said position. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis hereby appoints Darla Shields as a provisional part-time Human Resources Coordinator, not to exceed one-thousand-and-forty hours per year at an hourly rate of thirty-five dollars per hour to start on November twentieth.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenties, what?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. I'd like to make that a motion.
Motion by Ms. Miller. Do I have a second? By Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Finance has not met since our last meeting. Our first budget workshop will be on this Wednesday, November fifteenth, at six P M here in the council chambers. And there are two other additional meetings scheduled for after that, November twentieth at six P M and November twenty-second at six P M for the remaining budget workshops. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
The first one was the fifteenth?
Yep, at six P M.
Six P, oh, okay.
Fifteen, twentieth, and twenty-second.
Right.
And they're on the calendar. Thank you. Ms. Fuller, fire emergency management.
Thank you, Mayor. Fire and emergency management hasn't met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is next Monday, November twentieth, at six-thirty P M here in the council chambers. And I would just like to take one last chance to remind everybody of our tree of valor. I'm collecting photos until Wednesday, the fifteenth. We've had such a great turnout on this project, and we're actually looking at planning a second tree. So there are gonna be two trees of valor.
Excellent. That's it. Thank you. Ms. Mann, Tourism Mighty.
Thank you, Mayor. Tourism last met on November eighth. Committee reviewed the full foliage festival and set a date for next year, which will be held on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. The board would like to thank Marie Kane for her assistance with the first annual scavenger hunt that was held during the downtown spectacular. Chris Kinda Market will be held on Sunday, November twenty-sixth, from ten to five P M downtown. There will be over a hundred vendors between the Erie Trackside Manor and the Curbside. Or some wagon rides. I gotta sing this slow. He'll be the skinny German Juggle Boy, roaming humba bands. I don't know how Laura says it much faster.
He's helping with skinny German Juggle Boy.
I can't do it. There's the humba band, a petting zoo with pony rides, admission and parking is free. This year's Christmas lighting contest categories will be traditional and festive. The entry deadline is December twelve. Judging will be held on December fourteenth. The application can be found on the city's website or at the city clerk's office. They are, they are also preparing for Whoville Returns Support, which will be held on Sunday, December tenth, from three to five P M downtown, with special appearances by the Grinch, Grinch and the mayor of Whoville.
Did that pretty well.
Anyone with any further inquiries may email Tourism Chair Laura Meyer at flora@laurapj@yahoo.com. I would like to make a motion or consideration for the tourism event Whoville Returns to port on December tenth from three to five P M.
Motion by Ms. Mann, second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
You can also follow the Tourism Board's Facebook page for updates and announcements. The next tourism meeting will be held on Wednesday, December thirteenth, at seven P M here in the council chambers.
Stop ya. We are gonna cancel I D.
Oh, all right. So the I D hasn't met since their last meeting due to a lack of agenda items. They will not be meeting this month. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston, D P W C D A.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October second, two thousand and twenty-three D P W minutes.
I have a motion for the D P W. What date is that?
October second.
October second. Motion by Mr. Livingston, second. Second by Ms. Miller. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Garbage and recycling for the week of November thirteenth will be on its normal schedule. The week of November twentieth, the first, second, and third ward garbage and recycling will be picked up on its normal schedule. Fourth ward will be picked up, garbage will be picked up on Wednesday, November twenty-second. That's Thanksgiving week. The fourth ward will be picked up on Wednesday. The week of November thirteenth, paper recycling will be on its normal schedule. The week of November twentieth, paper will be picked up on Monday, the twenty-seventh. So that will be, the fourth ward will be picked up on the twenty-seventh, which is a Monday. The twenty, the two thousand and twenty-three garbage schedule is available on the city website at www.portjervisny.gov or by emailing the D P W office at dpwclerk@portjervisny.gov. Compost pile will be open every Saturday from seven-fifteen through eleven-thirty. Tree limbs cannot be over three inches in diameter. Bag leaves and brush will be picked up every Monday until finished. Loose leaf pickup will be every Monday until pick up, uh, finished. Our December D P W meeting will not, we're canceling that because of the holiday season, and there's not much on the agenda for that. C D A, the PJ C D A last met on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth. Due to the upcoming sweeping changes within HUD, Housing Voucher System, training totals of twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars has been approved for staff. Up to four grants, three R I S C grant and one N Y S D O T and one presentation to the Port Jervis Common Council on Housing are scheduled by the end of November. A letter of support for the proposed Orange County Bike Way Vision Plan was approved. A New York State D E C video highlighting various D E C projects, including the partnership between the city and the Orange County Land Trust regarding the ongoing W Q I P land acquisition grant of one million, eight-hundred thousand dollars plus was, let me say that again. One twenty-eight million dollars plus was filmed on October twenty-third. Mayor Decker and Kyle Sandusky from Orange County Land Trust were the principals of the video, expected to launch in the, in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. Development of the Never Sink Watershed Management Plan, which includes a Port Jervis boat launch is moving forward. A previous Port Jervis C D A small business loan holder, Jennifer Biskoff, owner of Super Mix here in Port Jervis, was scheduled to be on the, on episode of Shark Tank. It was November third.
She was, and she, and she got money. She got all offers.
The next meeting of the Port Jervis C D A is scheduled for Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, at seven P M at the rec center. And...
You have two resolutions.
Resolutions. The first resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis to fill an open bus driver position, whereas the City of Port Jervis recognizes the need to fill an open bus driver position, and whereas the D P W director advised interviewed candidates who met the qualifications and is recommending the hiring of Regina Baumgartner for the position with a start date of eleven twenty-twenty-three. Now therefore it is resolved by the Common Council of Port Jervis that appoints Regina Baumgartner as a probationary bus driver, and I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Mr. Livingston, second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And the second resolution, and you should have gotten all the documentation and the resolution on this, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis for the submission of a New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Drinking Water Source Protection Program Technical Assistant Application. And I'll go down to that. Now here, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis hereby approves submission of a drinking water source protection program application for a no-cost technical assistance of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation no longer, no later than four P M, November fourteenth. And it is hereby further resolved that the mayor of the, or the City of Port Jervis Community Development Agency, as is designated or any other designated as identified by the mayor, is authorized to execute, execute, execute and, and all documents in connection with the foregoing. And I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Mr. Livingston, second. Second by Ms. Miller. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And now I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, code.
Thank you, sir. On our agenda, we, we were going to consider the hotel and motel units, but due to the secret limitations, that's going to be extended to our next meeting on November twenty-seventh. As well as the short-term rental. That will also due to the secret limitations. I would like to set a public hearing for six-thirty-one P M on the eleven-twenty-seven, our next council meeting, for the tax levy limit. And I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Mr. Simmons.
Second.
Second by Mr. Livingston.
I had to consider exceeding the cap.
Exceeding the cap, yes.
Okay, so let's make that motion, set a public hearing to consider a local law exceeding the tax cap levy limitation for the tax year twenty-twenty-four. I'll amend my motion then.
Mr. Livingston?
I'll amend my.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Our next code meeting will be on December sixth at six-thirty P M here in the council chambers. I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I have for Ms. Newhauser Recreation Police. Under Recreation, the youth center recreation room will be closed November twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Recreation office will be closed November twentieth, but will reopen November twenty-first and twenty-second. Little chef classes are being held Saturday mornings at the youth center from ten to twelve. Class is full and will continue through November ninth. No class November twenty-fifth. The rec department is sponsoring a trip to see the New Jersey Devils against the Vancouver... What is it, Canucks?
Canucks.
Close. On January sixth, twenty-twenty-four, charter bus will leave Port Jervis at four-fifteen P M. Cost for the bus and tickets is only a hundred and fifteen dollars per person. The section is one-twenty-two, rows six through eight. Contact Recreation Office for more details at E five-eight four oh four five or recreationaldirector@portjervismy.gov. As many of you know, the new parking lot, well, I'm not even gonna go through that because we've changed it. We're in the process of closing down parks for the season. By Thanksgiving, swings will be down, picnic tables will be put away. We do this every year so that we can repair and repaint. There is no Recreation Commission meeting in December. The next meeting will be scheduled for Wednesday, January tenth, twenty-twenty-four, at six-fifteen P M at the youth center. Okay, with the police, I have a couple of things. First, I'll entertain a motion to approve the October monthly report. What's your pleasure? Motion by Mr. Livingston. Second by Ms. Mann. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'll entertain a motion in Mr. Frank, if you would just fill in any pieces here. A rejection of the bid received for the range building.
Yeah, subject to the one bid being received, rejected, and authorizing the issuance of a revised request for proposals with updated specs and an updated drawing for the pole barn building.
I have a motion by Mr. Simmons, a second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Santa is coming to Port Jervis. Please announce the save the date and ask the council for approval of the annual Port Jervis P D, Port Jervis Fire Department, and Outdoor Club of Port Jervis Santa tour scheduled for December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, from noon to five P M, touring the city streets and making stops at city fire stations escorted by police, fire vehicles, and members of the Outdoor Club. What's your pleasure? Motion by Mr. Livingston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I have a resolution. This is the resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis for the Stop D W I program, twenty-three, twenty-four. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council is desirous of participating in the annual Stop D W I enforcement wave, whereas the County of Orange makes available funding for the same. Now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis hereby authorizes and delegates the authority of Chief of Police William Wardon to sign and execute contracts for the County of Orange to accept grant funding and participate in Stop D W I enforcement deployments through the Stop D W I program and high-visibility enforcement campaigns administered in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. What's your pleasure? Motion by Mr. Simmons, second. Second by Mr. Livingston. Discussion.
Just to note, it's their standard grant issuance contract for Stop D W I. I've gone through it. There have been no changes from the last one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. And that's all that we have for housing, or, excuse me, for recreation and police. Housing and Veterans, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. The last meeting of the Housing Authority was held on Tuesday, October the twenty-fourth. The next meeting is scheduled for November twenty-eighth at seven P M at Hillside Terrace, and there will be no meeting in, in December. The next Senior Club meetings are November fifteenth and November twenty-ninth at one-thirty at the Fellowship Hall in West End. Veterans, the two thousand and twenty-four V A disability rates will increase December first by three-point-two percent. Not as much as last year, but a good number anyway. And this is pretty exciting. All World War Two veterans are now eligible for no-cost health care, medical services, and nursing home care from the V A. The less than a hundred and twenty thousand World War Two vets that are still alive will no longer have to make copayments or monthly premiums regardless of disability ratings or their priority group in the V A health system. I'd like to thank everyone that participated in the, in the Veterans Day Parade and those people that watched the parade and the ceremony. Thank you for coming out to support our veterans. I'd like to congratulate all those people that were successful in the last election. I'd like to thank those people that offered to serve our city. Thank you very much for that. And I send out a monthly calendar to an email list of people that have subscribed to my email list. If anyone would like to get the monthly calendar sent to their email, you can email me at stanseagle2@gmail.com. And hopefully at the beginning of the year, I'm gonna do a mini newsletter and attach that as well. So if you're interested in either or both, please email me at stanseagle2@gmail.com and I'll send you the calendar and the newsletter if we get that going. Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Public comment. Anybody from the public?
Mayor, since there's nobody from the public, it seems. I just happened to be going through my folder here, and I pulled up, what, what's the status of that mural that they were gonna do up across from...
I have not heard anything. I have not heard anything more on that.
I just happened to see it.
And it's something that probably can pop up for the, um, um, for the D R I if they approve that funding for like advertisements and stuff, you know, stuff like that. But even the artists, I haven't, I, I never even got a rendering back.
Okay, all right. So it may be.
So it might, it might not.
I just happened to see.
I know Jay, I know Jay said that he was in favor of it, so.
I have some pain if you'd like to do it. Yeah, I'm very artistic.
Not hearing any from the public. I have a few things that we have to cover. First is an application, public assembly permit for pet pictures with Santa to benefit the Humane Society, to be held at the Howard Reed Engine Company Number Four on thirty-one Owen Street. This is for December third, from eleven o'clock to four o'clock. So what's your pleasure? Siegel? Second. Livingston? All in favor? Opposed? Don't sound so energetic. All opposed? So carried. Kid, you made the second. Just another announcement on the parking passes for public parking lots. They are, you are able to come and get a pass for a discounted rate for forty dollars before December first. After December first, it is eighty dollars. So please make your way or contact the clerk's office if you need a permit for overnight parking in the wintertime. Again, it's forty dollars through, uh, December, or through November thirtieth. On December first, it is eighty dollars. Clerk's office is open Monday through Friday, nine to four.
Is this gonna be on a website?
I believe I did have it on the website.
Yeah, because we've went through this one.
Yeah. Yeah, it was announced two weeks ago as well.
Mayor, could you perhaps just run through the winter parking?
Yeah, so what's happening is from December first, the, the law states from December first through April first, all vehicles must be off city streets from one A M. in the morning till six A M. What we have done the last few years is I have worked weekly with our police chief and our D P W director, and we have looked at extended forecasts, made it very clear that if a storm comes up in the last minute, we may have to lift, but we have waived that parking requirement. I plan on at least up to December thirty-first continuing to do the same thing. I'm sure the next mayor would probably do the same thing as well. It'll be announced on Nixle, on our Facebook page and our Twitter page each week as you go by. Helps for planning. Obviously, if a storm comes up and it's going to accumulate more than an inch of snow, we're asking everybody to, that they have to go back to the parking, uh, local law as, because there will need to be cleaning of the city streets.
Thank you.
So people that don't have Nixle should sign up.
Should sign up, and it's right on our homepage. As soon as you go on to portjervismy.gov, you can click right on the homepage. It says right, right there, Nixle, and, and sign up. And you can get text messages or emails or both. That being said, I'm going to present my last and final budget for two thousand and twenty-four, the mayor's proposed budget. Remember, this is the mayor's proposed budget. It then goes to the council. The council meets with department heads. Again, those department head meetings start on November fifteenth at six o'clock, where most of them are being done, I believe, on the fifteenth, right? So I just want to give you some background on this proposed budget. Lots of changes because we did a lot of trending. We're able to do it more so with Tyler Technology this year. Does not mean that that can't change throughout the year, depending on how the economy or, or things in the economy change. But we have had a decrease, meaning income... Um, but we have had a decrease, meaning income decrease, of twenty-four point seven five percent in our taxable assessed value. So with that, we've had some increases. Our employee retirement service has increased, um, between thirteen point one and fifteen point two because, uh, it depends on the employee. Um, overall budget change is two point one percent. Uh, our police and fire retirement has increased from twenty-seven point eight percent to thirty-one point two percent. Overall budget, that increase is three point four zero percent. So if you're doing your math, we've lost twenty, almost twenty-five percent income and now we have, uh, additional debt of five and a half percent. On top of it, our health insurance. The health insurance went up anywhere from eight point eight eight five percent with our Medicare Family Two to nineteen point three six one percent with our family, uh, Medicare Family One. Me, uh, Medicare individuals went up eighteen percent. Individual, um, individual insurance went up nine percent. Family insurance went up eleven percent, and they are big numbers. So as I said before, uh, we watch trends. Um, some of the things that you need to understand that you're gonna see in the budget, our insurance, and you're all well aware of this, went up a hundred and forty-eight percent. Um, that's not, that's not, not the overall budget, it's just on that line. Um, taxes on city-owned property, as we talked about this, you're gonna see an increase of a hundred and thirty-three percent. That is because we're holding those properties. Two years down the road and four years down the road, you're gonna see a revenue increase. Our engineering fees are up. Uh, rec, you're gonna see a, a big number. That is because, uh, that is a one-time deal with fencing that needs to be installed, as well as the maintenance supply went up. Our police overtime budget went up twenty-one percent. Again, this is on the line items, not for the entire budget. Uh, salt removal went down twenty-two percent. Uh, we've gotten lucky the last few winters. Um, and then we have a fuel reduction across the board 'cause we didn't use as much fuel as we did last year, um, or at least expense-wise. And then you're gonna see in the fire department, officers' expense is an allowance of three hundred percent increase. Um, that is apparently for training that they have. So before I throw this number out at you, I want you to know that, um, ten years ago, we were barely afloat. We have a, um, she doesn't like me to use this word, but I call it fun balance. Um, we have the comfortable fun balance, but as I explain to people, you're gonna see other municipalities using that fun balance. You should not use the fun balance because if something happens in New York State, you need to make sure you make payroll, you need to make sure that you can pay employees, and that includes retirees and their salaries. Because if the state of New York, something happens, it falls back on the municipality. So please, the, what I'm asking is a parting gift, please do not touch fun balance. These are all the things that, um, that we saw in this budget. That being said, you're probably thinking a crazy number. I will tell you that the average homeowner will see an increase of five dollars and ninety-nine cents per month. Obviously, some might be a lot less, some might be more, um, but the average is five ninety-nine a month. The percent levy that you approved last year was a five point one percent. This year, I am presenting you with a four point two three percent. And so the budget is now yours.
So what is the fencing for recreation?
That you'll have to ask the recreation director when you meet them.
We can have that discussion.
When you, when you have that meeting.
We have our meeting, yeah. Certainly will.
Okay. Um, that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Livingston, second by, uh, Ms. Fuller? Was that Ms. Fuller or Ms. Mann? Thank you.
What was the bottom number?
Four point two three percent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you very much. I called people, so, I called and I left a message. I'm sorry, it came here. He asked me, he sent me a message. So, like the message.